Good afternoon. Happy New Year to everyone. For the record, this is the National Capital Planning Commission's January 7th, 2016 meeting. We do have a quorum, and so we will proceed with the agenda that has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and other than to once again wish you a Happy New Year, I don't have any report. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Happy New Years to all. First of all, I have a personnel announcement to make. We welcome Canaan Williams as a management program analyst in the Office of Administration. Canaan, previous -- hello. Canaan previous worked as an administrative officer at the National Institute of Health, which ironically is on our agenda today. Canaan holds a Master's Degree in Women's Study from Towson University and a Bachelor's Degree in Human Development from Mount Vernon College. Last month, the agency released its 2015 year in review. Our annual report is posted online at ncpc.gov, and you'll find a postcard announcement at your seats. The last major redesign of the agency's website was completed seven years ago, and it's time for an overhaul. I'd like to bring up our webmaster, Steve Morgan, to tell you how we are approaching the redesign, and I'll give a short presentation.
Thank you, Director Acosta. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The website is the primary means where people get information about our agency. The Office of Public Engagement and Coordination with all other divisions of NCPC is comprehensively redesigning the website. It still needs to be more user-friendly to meet the needs of key users, the general public, applicants, other agencies, partner organizations, and of course, you, the commission. Here's what we hope to accomplish. We want to make the website so that it's easier to navigate and to find information, more visually appealing, and to better convey the agency's work and mission. We want to make sure we're meeting all federal requirements, including privacy, security, and accessibility. We need to stay current with best practices in website development. For example, people increasingly access information from the web on mobile devices, so we'd like to ensure a webpage will be displayed properly on handheld devices as well as a desktop computer. This is a 12-month process that includes four phases: research, planning, page creation, and user testing and review. We've conducted dozens of interviews with staff members, people from other agencies, media, and just about anyone we could think of that uses our website. We've researched what other federal agencies and civilian companies are doing, and currently we're in the planning stage, deciding the general layout of the website, what technologies to include, and creating a development schedule. We're moving to the third phase, page creation, very shortly. We'll update every page on the website, working with our colleagues. However, you won't see most of these changes until we roll out the overall new website no later than September. We'll also be back in early summer to give you an update. If anyone has suggestions on how we can improve the website, please let us know. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We're all very proud of the Office of Public Engagement and its staff and the considerable creativity you all bring to our public outreach. It's been much improved over the years, and the website, as you know, is our primary means. Anybody have questions for Mr. Morgan? Thank you very much. We look forward to additional reports. Agenda item number three is the legislative update. General Counsel, Schuyler.
I have nothing to report. Those bills that I am tracking have not moved forward, and there has been nothing new introduced.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and we have three items on the agenda for today. Item number one, or item 4A, is the Fort Belvoir Training Center. Item 4B is the National Capital Region Campus Renovation Project and Park Police District One Substation. Agenda item 4C is the Consolidated Plan Unit Development and Related MAP Amendment for the O Street Pumping Station. Are there any questions on any of those amendments? If not, is there a motion for the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the passing of the consent calendar? Agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Please, no? Thank you, it's passed. Agenda item number 5A is the National Institutes of Health Bethesda Campus Final Master Plan. We have Mr. Wile. And I think we're going to have a short, very exciting video on the NIH campus as well that may prove very helpful to us.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This is a final master plan resubmission from the National Institutes of Health in Bethesda, Maryland. As you may recall, in April 2015, the final master plan was submitted for commission review and subsequently disapproved since the plan would have increased parking by 1,000 spaces. In follow-up to that commission meeting, Chairman Bryant reached out to NIH to find a way forward, and in response, Ms. Colleen Barrows, who serves as the Deputy Director for Management at NIH, proposed to cap employee parking at its existing level of 9,045 spaces in the master plan. So this current master plan reflects the cap on employee parking, and I will discuss -- I'll discuss that topic later on in my presentation today. So the NIH Bethesda Campus is located in Southern Montgomery County, Maryland, just inside the Beltway, as shown by this yellow dot. As you can see here, NIH, the NIH campus is located directly to the west of the NSA Bethesda Campus, which is the home to the Walter Reed National Military Medical Center and directly north of the Bethesda Central Business District. Moving in for a closer look, as you can see, the NIH campus is bounded by Rockville Pike on its east side, Old Georgetown Road on its west side, West Cedar Lane on its north side, and the campus is located directly adjacent to the Medical Center Metro Rail Station, which is along the red line approximately halfway in between Metro Center and the Shady Grove Stations. So the master plan is based on several planning principles, which are shown before you here on the slide, and these are intended to accomplish a number of things, including reorganizing the campus around community clusters, reinforcing the campus's original street grid system, enhancing the campus's perimeter buffer area and creating a more defined open space system, and shifting future development closer to the campus's transportation center and local metro rail station. And these principles have not changed since the previous April 2015 version of the plan. So here's a graphic that shows all the future proposed master plan developments, shown in yellow, and the existing development, which is shown in gray, and I'll run through some of the more notable projects in the master plan over the next couple of slides. So starting in the south, the master plan includes a grounds maintenance/waste handling facility cluster, three new parking garages, and I'd just like to point out that these garages were included in the April 2015 plan, however, they have been significantly scaled back, you know, so they are consistent with the proposed parking cap that is before you here today. A key thing to note with these parking garages is these will allow the removal of a lot of surface parking in the south, in the southern part of the campus, and consolidation of that parking in these garages, and this is consistent with one of the comprehensive plan policies to remove surface parking and try to consolidate parking in structured parking situations. The master plan includes a 775,000-square-foot biomedical laboratory building, a new conference center addition to NIH's Natcher Building, a new campus police station, a new 600,000-square-foot administrative office building, which may be up to 17 stories in height, located in fairly close proximity to the metro rail station and NIH's front-end entrance along Rockville Pike, a new building addition to Building One, which is the headquarters building on the campus, and a new child development center located in the northwestern portion of the campus. Here's a summary graphic that shows a comparison between existing conditions and the proposed future conditions under the master plan. The key thing here to note is that, again, this shows the master plan employee parking cap. So today, there are 9,045 employee spaces on the campus, and within the master plan, those spaces will be held constant into the future, and you can see the result of that parking cap will be to fairly significantly improve the parking ratio from a 2.3 to a 2.6. That is based on the assumption that the employee population will grow by maximum 3,000 people. You can also see that the master plan proposes an additional 1.6 million square feet. It will remove a number of 11 acres of impervious surface area, approximately 13 acres of parking area, and increase the open space on the campus by approximately eight acres. So in looking at the bigger picture, the intent of the parking cap is to reinforce county, state, regional, and NCPC's smart growth policies by limiting employee parking, and in this way, moving into the future, NIH will further encourage its employees to more carefully consider how they travel to work. In general, NCPC staff believes the parking cap to be an interim step toward attaining the 1-3 parking goal, and NCPC recently reached out to Mr. Wieland, who is the Director of Facilities Planning at NIH, and he agreed that they can commit to looking at opportunities in their next master plan update, which is scheduled for 2018, to try to move the campus closer to that 1-3 goal. You'll note our last bullet in the next slide that shows the executive director's recommendation that speaks to this point. So this is the proposed recommendation on the table, to approve the final 2013 National Institutes of Health master plan, which includes a 9,045 space cap on employee parking. To note that the parking cap will considerably improve the NIH employee parking ratio, thereby eliminating the previous master plan's proposal to increase parking by 1,000 employee spaces, and to recommend that NIH develop its next master plan update, which is scheduled for 2018, to include goals and strategies to comply with the 1-3 long-term employee parking ratio through a combination of gradual parking removal and employee population growth. And that concludes my presentation.
Before we proceed to a video, are there any immediate questions for Mr. Wile? Mr. May?
Previously, I think we had letters from county authorities or something like that indicating their concerns about the parking ratio, and I know there's an indication in here in the report about that, but I didn't, maybe I missed it in the report, but what is the county's response to the current proposal?
Well, I followed up with Mr. Berliner's office, and his representative was here back in April to testify for the 1-3 parking ratio, and he was quite pleased with the cap in the master plan.
Hearing no further questions immediately, Mr. Wile, you want to proceed with the video?
Sure. Okay, well, while you're fooling around, can I ask a question? So what does, do you, have you done the math to, in terms of, I should know this, what's the, so when you go from 1.1 to 1, I mean...
2.3 to 2.6.
2.3 to 2.6, it's 1.2, right? Yeah, okay. How many, how many spaces are we talking? How many spaces is represented in that differential?
That's 1,000 spaces.
So in order, in order to get to 1-3 by, in the 2018 master plan, can you do that math for me?
Well, that's, I couldn't do it in my head right now, however, I've already figured out that number.
That was a test.
If we were to remove enough parking to get to the 1-3 today, we'd be moving, we'd have to remove 2,100 spaces about.
Right.
So in addition to that 1,000 spaces at the 2.6, we'd have to remove another 1,100 spaces about.
Another 1,000. And so, so by, in the 2018 master plan, there's an additional 3,000 people that is going to plan for, or possibly more by then, we don't know. So if you were a betting man, what would the chances be of there being able to realistically get there in the 2018?
I don't think they'll, I don't know that they'll really be able to fully commit necessarily to the 1-3 in two or three years. The 3,000 employee increase is over the next 20 years, but I think what we can do is, you know, we know where the NIH employees live today, and we've seen a trend of NIH employees moving from Silver Spring kind of closer into the campus, towards Bethesda and Rockville along the red line, the metro rail red line. If that trend continues, and it's looking like, you know, obviously the younger employees, the millennials, are starting to, you know, work at NIH, I think, I think we can, you know, hopefully work with NIH, you know, to convince them to up the parking ratio, you know, again, 20 years in the future. So it's a target that they're shooting for in the future, 20 years in the future, and if the trends, you know, seem to align over the next three or four years, hopefully we can, we can up that target, so to speak.
Yeah.
In the next master plan update. I think that's what we're, what we're hoping.
Just to also add, this also may be, the next master plan, this may be phased over time in terms of reaching that 1-3 parking goal. So for instance, if the purple line comes in at some point in time, that may be a trigger point. I think one of the issues that NIH raised was reliability of the red line to get employees to work, and Metro is now in the process of, I think they're going to do wholesale rehabilitation of that segment around the Medical Center within the next 10 years to 20 years, and that's been programmed in their capital improvement budget. So, and also the shifts in population and demographics throughout the region. As Mr. Wile pointed out, we've seen a shift of employees moving closer to NIH. I think we'll have to look at that more closely. The population will churn at that agency over the 20-year period. So I think all those things will, will have to be staggered in over a 20-year period, but I think the master plan could at least identify those opportunities and also identify one date.
So we're not talking about hitting 1-3 in 2018. We're talking about a new target date for hitting that in the 18 master plan.
Well, I'm not going to lay it out so it's more methodical into how we think about it. So I think it's not either-or, it's basically a set of conditions have to occur in order to make that happen, and to better understand that, I think, is the role of the master plan in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wile, proceed.
The NIH, leading the world as we move forward together towards a healthier tomorrow. The past 100 years, the NIH has been the leader in advancing global health care through its innovative biomedical research and application. Its 27 separate institutes and centers, the NIH is the largest agency for biomedical research in the world. Its integral role in health and medical research and training is reflected in a yearly budget of $31 billion. These funds are used to support over 30,000 research projects conducted on the main campus and at universities, medical schools, and independent research institutions. The impact of the NIH-supported research on the U.S. economy is significant. NIH research supports 432,000 jobs at more than 3,000 institutions and small businesses nationwide. In 2011 alone, NIH funding generated $62 billion in new economic activity, double taxpayers' investment. NIH serves as the foundation for the entire U.S. medical innovation sector that employs 1 million U.S. citizens, generates $84 billion in wages and salaries, and exports $90 billion in goods and services. As the NIH moves forward, it is poised for continued success in meeting the health care challenges of a global community with a 2013 master plan that outlines its objectives and provides a roadmap for helping the NIH realize its vision. One of the major goals of the 2013 master plan is fostering the environmental sustainability of the Bethesda Campus, a 310-acre, 90-building, state-of-the-art facility capable of supporting the NIH's mission and its world-class scientists. It is hoped that the strategic plan for the new building construction occurs over the The NIH campus is conveniently located at the Medical Center Metro Stop, which allows for easy commuting in the large Washington metropolitan area. From there, NIH employees enter a secure and supportive campus designed for maximum safety, efficiency, and sustainability. Marking the gateway to campus on the right side of the main entrance is the proposed new IC headquarters, which will house the directors and administrative offices at the NIH institutes and centers. It will include campus amenities such as a large cafeteria, conference center, fitness center, retail space, and a credit union. One of the organizing principles of the 2013 master plan is the development along Center and South Drives, which are the main streets of the campus. Three major development projects along Center Drive are the Central Research Building, a new police station, and the South Research Building, which will provide 774,000 square feet of flexible laboratory space, creating lab environments responsive to present needs and capable of accommodating future demands. The Central Research Cluster consists of approximately 33 acres and features the Clinical Center complex and a proposed new six-story, 300,000-square-foot animal research center. The open space strategy for the central cluster is to create the central quadrangle, which is intended as the symbolic heart to the pedestrian friendly campus. The North Research Center consists of approximately 14 acres of land, including a proposed new five-story, 288,000-square-foot biomedical research laboratory. The NIH strives to offer its employees a flexible and comfortable work environment so that they may balance the demands of their careers with their personal interests and obligations. The new childcare center will provide onsite and backup childcare for staff, as well as a subsidy program to make childcare more affordable for lower-income NIH federal employees. NIH is unequaled in its ability to attract and retain the world's top research scientists by providing them with the resources they need to do their life-altering work in a safe, supportive, forward-thinking environment. Innovation, technology, collaboration, compassion, these are your National Institutes of Health.
Thank you, that's very nicely done and very instructive and puts lots of things in context, and frankly, I'd like to have a copy of that if I could, just a moment. Any questions for Mr., any additional questions for Mr. Wile? Yes?
I just have a quick one. From the video, I guess it looks like a larger campus than I had thought of it in my head. How far is it from the metro station to the farthest point? It looked like the childcare facility was probably the farthest from the metro station. What's, can you give me a sense of the distance?
I believe, and Mr. Herring from NIH can correct me if I'm wrong, I, first of all, there's a very pretty robust transit shuttle system on campus. I believe if you walk from the metro rail station over to the Child Development Center, it's probably a 10- to 15-minute walk. It's a 310-acre campus, there's a very good shuttle system, and one of the nice things about this master plan is it's going to try to shift development closer to the metro rail station to try to encourage transit usage, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Mr. Herring, welcome back. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no additional questions, the idi, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a speaker, excuse me. Yep, 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 I have that. Mr. Frederick Gorov? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're happy to have you. I believe you're representing yourself, so you have three minutes.
Thank you very much for the time. Can you hear me right here? As you said, my name is Fred Gorov and formerly of Grove Site Associates, and since my retirement, I've been, I'm a partner of a new company here in Washington called Parking Development Solutions. I want to bring something to your attention that is, that will help meet some of the objectives that are stated so clearly in the master plan that has to do with parking. I know there's sensitivities to parking. What I'm going to talk about is a parking system that will reduce the impervious surface, increase open space, meet the environmental impacts, and be a, have a more friendly relationship with those that have to park on the campus. It's a technology that's not really well-known in the United States. It has worldwide attention where there are many of these parking garages I'm going to talk about. These are automated parking garages. In Europe and Asia, they're just now coming into the United States and getting the attention, and because that hasn't had the attention, it hasn't been documented, and there aren't the permitted scoping to allow these to be placed, and so what I'm asking is this be added to any scoping for new parking garages that are located on the campus. In brief, as part of Grove Site Associates, we studied automated parking systems. We were part of teams that helped design and implement parking systems in Dubai and one in Philadelphia, and we learned a lot about them. I actually had the opportunity to visit Italy, Switzerland, Turkey, and a number of other countries looking at these systems in place. So to be specific, my purpose in being here is to request that automated parking systems, also called automated vehicle storage and retrieval parking garages, be permitted as an acceptable alternative to conventional parking for the new garages that are being built, and that they be added to the scoping for any new garages that are being built. I'll give you just a few brief highlights about these parking garages. Because they require, or they do require, less space per car, in fact, 50% less space per car in terms of square feet as compared to conventional parking, so therefore parking facilities can be smaller. Because parking spaces can be smaller, the footprint is smaller. Because these cars are not driven within the garage, a person drives up to something that's very similar to your home parking garage, they pull in, they lock their car, they get out, and nobody else will enter the car, and the car is moved by machinery to be parked, similar to warehousing. Because they're not being driven within the parking spaces, the pollutants are reduced by some 83%, and the fuel usage is reduced by 83%, and that's documented in various published studies. There's less noise and light pollution, you don't have to light these inside, cars aren't being driven, so there's not any noise, and there's less energy consumption. Again, even though these are electric facilities, they're all electric, there, it requires less electricity usage because the ventilation is far less, we don't have to be running fans and the like, and the systems aren't lit. It's a friendly relationship for people that are using a parking. You don't have to search for a parking space, you just drive into these bays that are provided as you enter the system, and you don't have to retrieve your car, look for it, and find it, and drive it back out. Was that noise by three minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
You have one or two other points to make, please wrap up, but yeah.
Okay. I think that that describes my request and what I'm... I think that that describes my request and what I'm talking about. I think many of you received copies of this statement that I'm making in detail. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. You note that it is new technology and new design, and so we would encourage you to talk to NIH staff. This is their property, and they would have to consider it and the cost and the budgeting and building it to the design, and we're certainly now well aware of it. So we would look forward to perhaps, to perhaps, learning more about it later on.
Very well.
It's very nice of you to provide this.
I'll just mention that we made this similar statement to the commission studying the rewriting of the zoning ordinance in the district, and they have adopted language within the new zoning rewrite that will permit this type of parking to be a matter of right rather than of variance.
Thank you. That's very nice to know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick comment?
You may.
Excellent. First of all, I'm very supportive of this system, and I think NIH should be applauded if they actually adopt this. And I think one of the things that I've seen in terms of the AVSRS is that our own low code, as you've just mentioned, our code requirements prohibit it based on drive aisles and certain spaces per car. And I think, you know, just in the discussion that we've just had in terms of getting to ratios, there's a lot of different issues that go into ratios. And we should look at reducing total drivers overall. This obviously doesn't address that, but it does address the impact that the actual parking structures have, especially on large campuses like this, but also in other areas. And that, it does reduce the footprint and the impact on the land. It's incredibly efficient from what I've seen. So I think this is a great piece that would come forward, and I hope it gets a lot of attention and frankly, a lot of utilization, especially in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Wall, you'll be learning more about this for sure.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Last call for comments or suggestions. Mr. May?
So, you know, I do appreciate this change in the Master Plan, and it's certainly a positive step. The thing that I think we need to have some focus on, when I say "we," I mean "you" actually, is on how things progress on the campus. I mean, we're talking about a growth in the population of 3,000 over 20 years, and I don't know how quickly any of the parking garages are going to come online, or how quickly any of these people will start working there. But we're really not talking about a change in the parking ratio significantly in the next five years. What we should be doing in the next five years, in addition to, you know, looking at ways of reducing the number of cars that come to the campus, is actually tracking things very carefully. And I think that when it comes around in 2018, I'll be very interested to see where the -- how things have been going. In other words, real parking counts on the parking garages or the parking lots or whatever, so we know what the real use is. And I'd also like to understand better what the TDM measures are that they're using and how well those are succeeding. Because I think that what we, you know, what we too often are reacting to when it comes to decision-making on, in this actual forum, is anecdotal information about how terrible it is trying to buy a parking space, or how many parking spaces are available. I mean, it's things like that, and actually, you know, good data is going to be very important when we get to a future stage. And I'm, you know, frankly, in my view, this is kind of the minimum that could be done at this point, and I'm looking for much more aggressive measures when this comes around next time.
Well, I'm glad you said that. I was going to refrain, but I'm, me too. What he said. I mean, it, that's why I asked about the math. I mean, it, you characterize it as a significant improvement, and I guess, you know, compared to what, it is, but it's got to get better. And the chances are good that the, that they may be aided by, I get that this is largely special space and regular, you know, office space. This is not a campus filled with what we would call, you know, standard office space. So the ratios for, the desk ratio, or the use of telework, or all those things that we see on the move in other federal agencies will clearly be less. So here, nevertheless, it is the direction that we are all moving, whether we like it or not. And so the, so they, I would urge that where they can improve parking, they do so by looking at some mobile work strategies that will help the ratio, whether it's desk sharing or telework or what have you, for those who are in administrative support positions or whatever, the people who are not working in the labs and don't necessarily require the special spaces as we refer to them. But just that they use, that the office space be considered, they consider mobile strategies. That'll do, it won't, it'll do a little bit for the parking ratio, but yeah, I'm sort of disappointed that we can't do a little better, but I guess it is what it is.
If I could respond further to that, the, I think we can take some solace in the fact that it'll be back relatively soon. I mean, it's 2016, we're talking about 2018, so, which is interesting for a five-year plan, I guess. But the other thing about this, you said sort of the workplace and how people get to the workplace is changing whether we like it or not. And I think actually another important aspect of this that we should recognize is that actually, a lot of people like it, and a lot of people do want to take advantage of telework, and a lot of people do want to live closer to their jobs, and they do want to be able to commute by bicycle or other means. And I think that the, and people's attitudes towards owning and driving cars are changing, and they're changing rapidly. And, you know, I mean, again, I'll go with my own anecdotal evidence, which is my, you know, my children who didn't even start driving. Well, I have two 21-year-olds who don't drive at all. They don't have their licenses, their permits expired before they can get their license. And they really are probably hoping that they don't ever have to get a license, I guess. And my older son got his license when he had to, because he had to get a job where, I mean, he got a job where he had to drive. And the thing about, you know, I think, well, that's unusual because we live in the city, we're always, they're always taking metro. But it's actually not that unusual. I talked to a lot of people who, you know, whose kids are growing up in the suburbs, and a lot of them don't want to drive either. So I think the world is changing, and that's one of the reasons why I want to see what the evidence is in terms of parking usage, so.
Thank you. Hearing no additional comment, is there a motion on the EDR? It's presented. It's been moved, and is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 5B is the concept design for the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library Rehabilitation and Modernization Project. We will have several speakers shortly, but we welcome Ms. Hirsch.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The District of Columbia Public Library has submitted concept plans for the rehabilitation and modernization of the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library for your review and comment. The building is located at Ninth and G Street, just up the street from where we are today in downtown Washington. Nearby attractions include the Smithsonian's National Portrait Gallery, the Verizon Center, as well as Mount Vernon Square and the Carnegie Library to the north. Over the last 20 to 25 years, this portion of downtown, like much of the city, has undergone revitalization and redevelopment, which has brought an increase in visitors and activity downtown. Just north of the MLK Library, the City Center Project, a mixed-use development recently opened on the site of the old convention center. As part of that project, a section of 10th Street and I Streets were reestablished connecting that development to the surrounding city. So given the recent redevelopment efforts in that area, the modernization of the MLK Library will contribute to the vibrancy of this area, and it's an ideal time for the district to invest in one of its most important civic buildings. To take a closer look at the block where MLK is located, the building and site are bound by Ninth Street on the east, G Street to the south, a closed private alley between the building and the church and office building that's on the west, and then G Place to the north. The Secret Service Headquarters Building is also to the north, as well as the Historic Webster School. So to briefly review some of the history of the building, it was designed by the modern master and architect Ludwig Mies van der Rohe. Mies is standing here over a model of his Crown Hall Building in Chicago on the upper left, and on the bottom left is an image of the Seagram Building in New York City. Mies is perhaps more well-known for both of these buildings and a few others in the MLK Library, but the library reflects many of the same principles that you see in his other buildings. He often emphasized rectilinear forms, open flexible floor plans, and the expression of building materials. The library was one of his last projects. His design work started in 1965, and he passed away in 1969 before the building was opened in 1972. The library is also his only building in the District of Columbia and his only executed library design. The building is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, as well as the district's inventory of historic sites, and that designation also extends to the first floor, the interior of the building. So at the outset of the project, the architects and design team conducted extensive research on Mies and his buildings, and here you can see some of their diagrams analyzing the library. Their research revealed that though the library is not a typical Mies high-rise or one-story building, it reflects several characteristics that you see in Mies van der Rohe buildings, and that includes an exposed steel structure and curtain wall with applied I-beams, the organization around a grid system, a central open space, and then on the edge of that central open space are the four cores or stairwells. The first floor is predominantly glazed, and also the building features a recessed loggia on the ground floor. One of the library's main goals with the project is to respect the significance and character of the building while transforming it into a world-class library and destination for the district. We'll also mention the building is a memorial to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The building was the first memorial to Dr. King in the district after his assassination. There are several pieces of artwork dedicated to King in the building, including the mural in the Great Hall that was installed in 1986. The building has not had a major renovation since it opened, and the exterior appears much as it did when it opened in 1972. The steel structure is exposed on both the exterior and interior, which is a signature trademark of Mies's work. The curtain wall system itself is in need of repair as portions of it are corroded, and the glass is cracked or damaged in several areas as well. In addition, the building's systems, including the heating, cooling, mechanical plumbing, and electrical, are all in need of a major upgrade. So here are some other images around the site, including the east vehicle ramp that's at the intersection of Ninth and G Place, and the site walls that are directly adjacent. Here's a detail of that site wall looking north. This is Ninth Street here. You can see that the area behind the wall between the building and the sidewalk is gated off. A view down G Place, the loading dock is located here on the right, and then finally the rooftop and the existing screen enclosures. So just to quickly review how vehicle circulation and parking work on the site currently, there are approximately 100 spaces on the B level, which is the second underground story for the building. These spaces are for library employees and also for the library's fleet vehicles. So to access the B level and the parking, currently vehicles travel down 10th Street south, they turn left onto G Place, and then they enter through the west ramp. And then to exit, they come up the east ramp and turn right onto Ninth Street, traveling south. On the interior, on the upper left is the main entry vestibule, which leads to the main lobby or Great Hall that you see here on the upper right. On either side of the Great Hall are two larger reading rooms. This is the west one, also known as the digital commons, and then on the bottom right, a shot of an interior stairwell. The commission last saw this project in 2014 as an information presentation, and at that time there were a number of alternatives being considered. Essentially, there were two approaches which were being pursued, a one-story addition which would include a library use only, and then a larger addition that would include another use in addition to the library. In 2015, the Board of Library Trustees adopted a resolution indicating that they supported a program for library use on the existing four stories building, and then adding an additional fifth floor. That decision was based on a number of factors, including financial considerations, and therefore, the library determined that the larger addition that you see here as alternative C would not be carried forward any longer. And so therefore, NCPC will not be carrying that forward through the National Environmental Policy Act or in the environmental assessment. So since the library board's decision, as well as consultation through the Section 106 process, as well as reviews with other regulatory agencies, including CFA and the district's Historic Preservation Review Board, the library has identified a preferred alternative, which you see here. This alternative is a combination of two of the alternatives that the commission saw previously in 2014. This alternative proposes a fifth-story addition that is trapezoidal in form and set back from the building edge. The addition will house a new auditorium, as well as event space, and provide access to a new public roof garden. Staff agreed with the selection of this preferred alternative in terms of the addition as it was most consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards, as the addition is differentiated but also compatible in terms of its form, massing, and materials. So the concept plans before you today reflect the library's selection of this trapezoidal addition as the preferred alternative. And this diagram highlights some of the primary components of the project. To make the building more accessible and understandable, the library is proposing a variety of treatments. One of the main ones is to improve vertical circulation in the building and therefore improve the cores that surround the Great Hall. In addition, they're looking to open up the upper stories and provide a level of transparency and connectivity that you see on the first floor. And again, the new addition that includes event space and a public roof garden, and finally, site improvements that will address the brick walls around the site and connect the building to the surrounding urban environment. Overall, staff supports the library's plans to establish a premier central library in the city that honors the significance of the building. And throughout the consultation process, staff has understood the need to balance historic preservation, planning, and design issues, and so we structured our recommendation to reflect that. Essentially, the staff recommendation is broken down into two sections, one which addresses the site and exterior, and the second which examines historic preservation issues. With respect to the historic preservation topics, we are requesting that the commission provide comments on areas which address the interior of the building. While the commission does not typically comment on interiors, several of the modifications have the potential to impact how the building is viewed from the exterior, and as the lead agency for the Section 106 compliance, we evaluated the effects on the entire building with a particular focus, I would say, on the first floor, as that is landmarked. So to take a closer look at what is proposed So, to take a closer look at what is proposed for the site improvements, the library is proposing to make modifications to the loggia along G Street, to lower the brick site wall along Ninth Street, to introduce a new public outdoor space near the intersection of Ninth and G Place. They've submitted three options for the treatment of the vehicle ramps, and then some modifications to the loading dock. So, in the loggia, the existing site wall at the west end between the library and the church building will be removed. This will improve public safety and provide an opportunity to introduce new programming on the site. Possible ideas for that programming include a movable book kiosk, outdoor seating, and informal events, perhaps a farmer's market. Activating the loggia with these different types of activities will draw people to the building and also provide a connection to the surrounding urban context. Staff is supportive of creating a stronger connection between the building and its surroundings where possible on the site. So, moving to the vehicle ramps in the corner of Ninth Street and G Place, as I mentioned, the library submitted three options for the treatment of this area. Steph sees the corner of Ninth and G Place as an opportunity to address the site walls which present public safety issues, but also to improve the pedestrian experience and enliven the streetscape. The site walls are a character-defining feature of the building, but they block views to and from it and do not reflect an openness, or welcoming, that is commensurate with the main public library. Also, the location of the vehicle ramp directly adjacent to G Place contributes to the conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, as you have two lanes that are turning right onto So, the first option essentially improves the existing conditions. Both vehicle ramps would be retained, the site wall along Ninth Street would be lowered, and a small outdoor space would be provided near the corner of Ninth and G Place. I should mention with all of these options, a new doorway would be installed in this wall in the east reading room to provide access to that outdoor space. Within the east reading room, the library is considering some new uses, such as a café, as well as the DC Welcome Center. So, under this circumstance, vehicles would continue to enter the garage from the west ramp and exit from the east to turn right onto Ninth Street. So, from the pedestrian level, you get a sense in these images of how lowering the site wall would improve views to and from the building. Again, the existing vehicle ramp would remain and receive minor landscaping improvements. The second option would eliminate both the east and west vehicle ramps and create two larger outdoor public spaces. Under this option, the parking on the B level would be eliminated. Steph understands that the library has been asked to explore the idea of co-locating another related district agency in the building, and this may be the DC Archives, and they would likely occupy the B level, which is where the parking is currently located. There are many factors that are playing into that decision, and Steph understands that the discussions are still ongoing among several district agencies, and that a final decision has not yet been made. And so, while we're aware that the discussions are ongoing, it may have some bearing on the site design. From Steph's perspective, we evaluated the site improvements from a planning and design perspective in terms of the quality of the open space that's directly adjacent to the So, the third option would eliminate the east vehicle ramp and retain the west vehicle ramp in order to provide access to parking on the B level. This option has the benefit of providing a much larger public open space at the corner of Ninth and G Street. This option could still accommodate another district agency on the B level, but could also retain a small amount of parking for the fleet vehicles and the police vehicle that the library needs. Also, Steph's understanding in conversations with the district Department of Transportation is that this configuration could also work if 100 vehicle parking spaces were retained in the building. While it would be more difficult to have only one ramp with 100 spaces, and there's no agreed-upon solution at the moment with DDOT to have that, the ramp would be modified, DDOT has suggested that a combination of parking management strategies and physical alterations can make this solution viable. There's also the possibility of eliminating some parking spaces off of G Place so that vehicles can make the turn coming out of the west ramp. So, here you can see some pedestrian-level views of that corner under options two and three, and the character that the space could take on if the walls were lowered and the ramp eliminated. Obviously, there'd be a significant urban design improvement to the section of Ninth Street and a visual and physical connection to the streetscape. So, from Steph's perspective, the project is a once-in-a-generational opportunity to address the site walls and make adjustments that will connect the building to its surrounding urban environment. Steph recognizes the loss of the historic fabric, but the urban design benefits of providing an accessible, open, public space outweigh the historic preservation issues in this particular case. Therefore, Steph is recommending that the commission strongly support lowering the site walls and eliminating the ramp, as shown in options two and three, and that is to improve the visual presence of the library, to strengthen the connection of the building to its surrounding urban context by providing a public open space, and to improve public safety by reducing the conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles and establishing a visual connection between activities in the buildings and the surrounding. Steph is recommending the commission not support option one, as retention of the vehicle ramp would restrict the size and character of that open space, and it would continue to contribute to the poorer visual connection and pedestrian experience along Ninth Street. Moving to the loading dock off of G Place, the concept plans call for enclosure of a portion of the loading dock to create an informal performance space that would be accessed from the Great Hall. The loading dock will remain in the same location and general configuration with some minor improvements to the curb. With the projects, there is an opportunity to incorporate additional landscaping and pedestrian amenities adjacent to the loading dock, which would improve the experience of G Place. And therefore, Steph is suggesting that additional design solutions be explored to prioritize pedestrian movement through the area and provide a clear, accessible pathway. Moving to the interior of the building, I'll spend a few minutes highlighting some of the modifications and the staff's recommendation with respect to historic preservation issues. Again, as I mentioned, while the commission does not typically comment on interiors in this case because the commission is the lead agency for the Section 106 compliance, and the first floor of the building is landmarked, staff evaluated these effects. So, proposed alterations to the first floor, I've mentioned some of them already, but include changes to the cores, the new informal performance space off of the Great Hall, the west reading room would receive some modifications, including the addition of pods or large enclosed rooms, and some new programming that I mentioned in the east reading room. So, to start with the cores or stairwells, as a reminder, vertical circulation in the building is not very clear as one enters. The stairwells can be a bit daunting, they're not very pleasant, and some consider them a safety hazard because there is no visibility into them. The reconfiguration of the stairwells to support new circulation patterns is critical to the design concept. The southwest and southeast cores would become the main public stairs to the building. Those are currently primarily used for staff at the moment. The concept for the cores is that while the exterior cladding will remain, the interior will be replaced with new finishes and introduce more visibility into the building. So, in addition to upgrading the stairwells themselves, the library is proposing to replace the brick in the main entrance vestibule with glass. The glass will improve visibility and make it clear as soon as visitors enter how one goes upstairs. Several options are under consideration as far as how much glass to use in the treatment of the vestibule. This has been one of the issues discussed in Section 106 process, and will continue to be addressed as we negotiate a memorandum of agreement. So, the options for the vestibule range from a full replacement of glass that you see on the upper left here, in the bottom left, to retain a portion of the original brick wall, and then the third option would be to replace all the material with glass, but in this corner, it would be more of an opaque glass, not transparent. So, retaining the brick minimizes impacts on historic fabric, and the district State Historic Preservation Office has highlighted that the retention of the brick allows the cores to read as volumes of space, as was intended with the original Mies design. Use of glass or opaque glass would alter the view of the core from the Great Hall, but would improve sightlines into the building, which aligns with the library's goals of making the building more accessible. So, therefore, Steph is recommending that the commission request prior to preliminary review, the library work with the appropriate review agencies regarding the use of glass, and also supports the library's efforts to introduce greater visibility into the building and invite visitors to explore it. Other changes to the first floor include the relocation of some of the original furniture. In these images, you see views of the existing and proposed southeast core from the Great Hall. The desk will be relocated and resized in order to provide a path, a clear pathway, to the new stairway. In the Great Hall, also the brick underneath the existing MLK mural will be removed to allow for enclosure of a portion of the loading dock and conversion to a performance space. Pivoting glass doors that you see in the bottom image would allow the space to be closed off during performances. So, on the west end of the first floor, in the digital commons, the library is proposing for large enclosed rooms or pods, which are the structures that you see here in red. These rooms, the idea behind them is that they would allow users to study or hold meetings in a quiet space that is separated from the digital commons. In addition, they feature workspaces on the top of the pods, as you see in this image. At one of the pods, the floor would be removed. That's to allow views and light to the A level, where the fabrication lab will be located. Steph recognizes that there is a programmatic need for the pods, but in their current configuration, they would disrupt and break up the large open space of the west reading room, which is a character-defining feature of the original design. And so therefore, Steph is recommending that the commission request the library identify alternatives for the pods by either reducing them in number, their scale, or changing the materials to make them more transparent. Plans for the east reading room, as I mentioned, include the possibility of a café and the DC Visitor Center. These renderings give a sense of how that space would be seen from the interior and Moving to the upper floors, I'll cover this fairly quickly. The main idea is to introduce the openness and transparency of the first floor to the upper floors. Currently, the center portions of these floors are defined by internal masonry partitions. Those walls would be removed to open up the space and introduce new programming. So, on the second floor, the center space would be occupied by the Community Alliances Division, while the northwest corner would become the center for accessibility. The east side of the second floor would house the children's area, and within that area, the library is proposing to add a slide for the children to interact with. On the third floor, a new two-story reading room would be inserted between the third and fourth floor. This room has been designed to fit around the existing column grid. Central area of the fourth floor will house the new auditorium, and the space directly adjacent will be available for pre- and post-function events or exhibitions. The new fifth floor would provide access to the auditorium, as well as flexible event space, and then this is also where access to the new roof garden would be provided. The roof garden is still under development, but concept plans reflect that there would be a mix of raised planting beds, seating areas, and open space. The roof terrace would be lit to allow for use at night, but the uplighting and spotlighting would be minimized. The lighting scheme is fairly conceptual at this point, but lighting will be replaced and upgraded throughout the building, and new lights will be added based on program Steph anticipates that lighting will be addressed through the Section 106 memorandum of agreement, and a process will be established for designing, for reviewing designs, as well as mock-ups. The library is proposing, as you see here, fixed table height desks throughout the building on the upper floors, along the perimeter gloss walls, and that will feature integrated task lighting. The desk lights will essentially create a ribbon of light that will be visible from the exterior. This rendering gives an idea of how new fixtures may appear from the exterior at night, and the potential of these new fixtures to alter the original linear pattern of lighting throughout the building. So, therefore, Steph is recommending that the commission request that the library work to balance the lighting requirements and the programmatic uses with the original lighting design to minimize visual effects. So, overall, Steph supports the library's concept plans for the rehabilitation and modernization project. With a prime downtown location, a revitalized building will help the library contribute to the vibrancy of the area, attract visitors, and support a variety of cultural programs. Steph recognizes that the library has made significant efforts to respond to regulatory agencies, as well as the consulting parties through the 106 process. So, it is the executive director's recommendation, I'll run through this, to support the library's vision to transform the MLK Library into a world-class facility that honors the significance of the building. To note that the project requires balancing historic preservation, planning, and design consideration, and with respect to the site design and exterior specifically, to note that the site walls are a historic feature, but they block views and present a public safety issue. Therefore, the commission strongly supports lowering the site walls, limiting the east vehicle ramp to improve the visual presence of the library, strengthen the connection of the building and site to its surrounding urban context by providing a public open space, and to improve public safety by reducing potential conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, and lowering the existing site walls and establishing a visual connection between activities in the building and the surrounding city. Does not support the retention of the east vehicle ramp along Ninth Street, as it would not allow for an open, accessible public space. Requested the library consider additional landscaping designs and pedestrian amenities in the vicinity of the loading dock. To note that the proposed rooftop addition is consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards, and then with respect to historic preservation more specifically, to note that the building is the work of Mies van der Rohe, enlisted in the National Register of Historic Places. To note that the commission is the lead agency for Section 106 process, and that the project would have an adverse effect on the building, but though there would be adverse effects, the plans do respect the significance while accommodating new uses, and that requests prior to preliminary review, specific issues for the entrance vestibule, the pods, the lighting, and steel curtain wall. That concludes my presentation. Available for questions, as well as representatives from the library and design team.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Very comprehensive. I will note that we have several speakers. I'll call them in this order: Bill Rice, Mary Alice Levine, and Mr. Chris Otter. Mr. Rice? Mr. Rice, welcome. I believe you're representing yourself.
No, I am not. I'm representing the Friends of the DC Archives.
Okay, you have five minutes.
And you have copies of my testimony, I hope? I have, I'm sure you see it?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And the clock is on the wall.
And the clock is on the wall. Okay. Good afternoon. I am Bill Rice, here on behalf of the Friends of the DC Archives about the renovation that we've been hearing about. We are a group of archival professionals and others who are interested in and who advocate for the Office of Public Records DC Archives and good record management in the district. We support the preservation, accessibility, and proper management of the district's historic and contemporary records in all formats. of the district's historic and contemporary records in all formats, including most specifically the replacement of the current substandard Naylor Court facility. One of our main goals is working with the Secretary of the District and the Department of General Services on a new state-of-the-art building. We had the good fortune, thanks to DGS, to review a comprehensive examination, the first that we know of, by DGS, of the district's record storage and space requirements for a new facility. And we anticipate, according to what we were told, that this will be released shortly for public comment. We are testifying here because of the ongoing discussions that we know about, including active interest by Mayor Bowser in potential synergies between DCPL and the Office of Public Record, the Archives, including the sharing of some physical space as well as administrative functions. FDCA believes that there are many functions of the Washingtoniana Division of MLK Special Collections that could, I emphasize the word "could," be shared with the Archives, namely, some appropriate public front-end activities and others. This could involve, and this could involve other activities and groups in the MLK, in a MLK History Center, as Library Director Richard Reyes-Gavilon has mentioned publicly on occasion. However, it is clear that the renovated MLK cannot accommodate a full-service, state-of-the-art archival facility. Indeed, according to the report that we reviewed, 370,000 cubic feet will be needed in such a facility for archival and current permanent records, as well as for temporary records, plus workstaff, workspace for staff, and other, according to the Hartman-Cox DGS report on the new facility. We therefore urge, and this is our strong recommendation, request to you and others, that a strategic planning effort be undertaken to study potential synergies between DCPL and OPR, Office of Public Records, including the possibility of shared physical space as well as combined administrative functions. This was our recommendation in our comments to the DGS report. We are anxious to work with the library and all other parties on exploring these options, starting with the recommended study. Thank you for this opportunity. Of course, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second is Mary Alice Levine with Friends of the Library.
Thank you. I, I have copies. I'm not sure if you have copies of this statement.
We do not have copies of yours, but we would be, we'd be happy to receive a copy and make it part of the public record and share them.
Okay. Should I do that now, or? My name is Mary Alice Levine, and I am reading the written testimony of Robin Diener, who is president of the MLK Library Friends. I write as a Section 106 consulting party member representing the MLK Library Friends. I also represent the MLK Library Friends on the MLK Library Renovation Advisory Panel. The MLK Library Friends find a number of problems with the renovation plans, which we will discuss below. But first, we will feel compelled to point out two issues that have impeded the effectiveness of consulting parties' participation in the planning process. One is the difficulty of judging plans in the absence of a detailed architectural building program narrative that describes the goals and functions of library spaces. MLK Library Friends continues to call on the library to produce this necessary document. Advisory panel members have even offered to help draft one. Second is our confusion over the NCPC's role as convener. NCPC has not caused meaningful discussion to take place between DCPL and consulting parties. It has accepted pro forma answers, and it has not required follow-up. For instance, page four of the December 16, 2015 NCPC presentation lists the need for further discussion of the auditorium and reading room issues based on the July and CPC meeting of consulting parties. No such discussions were ever held with consulting parties, nor have consulting parties received any report of internal DCPL discussions that led to decisions. Other examples exist. In addition, the following issues concern us. One, the auditorium on the fourth and fifth floors. Locating the main auditorium on the fourth floor will make it likely that most people will take the elevator. Moving a sizable number of people up and down will be time-consuming. Most concerning is the effect it will have on physically limited persons, especially those in wheelchairs, who will have no choice but to take the elevator and who have testified to DCPL about the competition they already face from able-bodied persons who prefer to take elevators meant foremost for wheelchair users and the physically limited. MLK Friends has raised this issue repeatedly. Alternative sites in the building should be considered for the auditorium. Two, welcoming entrance and vestibule. Making MLK Library's front facade less fortress-like and more inviting is the number-one request of residents and library users, many of whom say they avoid the library because it appears dark and feels dangerous. Opening the front by removing all brick is required to achieve the desired open feel to let in the light and to eliminate spaces where non-library users congregate on the sidewalk in ways that can seem threatening. This renovation will fall far short of if the brick remains. The bricks can be adaptively reused on the roof level to create low walls for gardens and benches. An all-glass front will make the staircase and the entire building more light-filled, filled, and transparent. I am going to skip the rest of this section in the interest of time and move to number three. The memorial to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The renovation is an opportunity to make a physical architectural statement that further honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. A structure suggesting the Soma Bridge has been suggested for the front of the building. Also, a chapel-like room for meditation or study where King's speeches might be shown along with the books he referred to in his speeches, which encompass many of the world's works of religion, philosophy, and literature. Discussions of programming about King have been held, but no physical space or objects have been considered so far as we know. No reports have been issued. Four, a new Washington History Center. DCPL has long needed a better facility for its unique and valuable Washingtoniana collection. In addition, the possibility of co-locating the DC Archives' Public Education Division with Washingtoniana, Black Studies, and other DCPL special collections is very appealing in theory. However, careful study of the needs of each is required before any plans can be assessed. For instance, the proposed auditorium takes up a large part of the fourth floor, which is the floor designated for special collections in the current plans. More space will likely be needed and would be justified given the importance of Washingtoniana and the DC Archives should it be co-located at MLK. They would both be a huge draw for the library and is another reason to reevaluate and the auditorium location. Five is the great reading room. A grand adult reading room was originally suggested by the MLK Friends, but DCPL plans, as now proposed, put it on the east side in direct line of the Verizon electronic billboard, a huge and inappropriate distraction. The reading room could be shifted to the center of the third floor and surrounded by the book stacks. This would make the reading room the quiet heart of the library as it should be. Reading rails along the windows, as proposed, could remain and allow for readers to choose their view. Ideally, the fourth-floor atrium space would also shift to the center, another reason to reconsider the placement of the fourth-floor auditorium. The issues raised above are only, are only the most major. Numerous others exist, such as where films will be viewed, why there's no bookstore for Library Friends, and why so much space on the second floor is devoted to as-yet unidentified partners. We appreciate the opportunity to comment on this project. We feel strongly that much remains to be examined and discussed with the interested public and the renovation advisory panel.
Thank you, Ms. Levine, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And third, we have Mr. Chris Otter. Welcome, Mr. Otter.
Good afternoon. Chris Otter, DC for Reasonable Development. We wanted to bring to the attention of the commission some concerns about the process with NEPA, particularly a conflict, potential conflict of interest. Every NEPA meeting that we've attended, we've seen consultants that have been hired by the library actually part of the team that's driving the meetings or is part, a central part of the meetings, particularly EHT trade series, which is taking notes and answering questions during the NEPA hearings and providing the notes. They're, they're actually consultants on the project, which, there just seems to be a conflict of interest there. And perhaps part of that conflict leads to maybe a lack of analysis in some of the changes in what has not been historically part of this landmark space since its creation. For example, the Maker Space, which we didn't see today. And this slide that we did see, there's been no analysis of what kind of liability the library is going to be taking on with these sort of spaces with laser cutters and saws and things like this in a very public space, a two, almost a two-story slide. I mean, I just don't, there's been no analysis of that aspects that have not been historically part of this landmark space. The auditorium at the top floors versus downstairs does have impacts to access, as we just heard, that hasn't been analyzed. The Community Alliances space, which is kind of ambiguous right now. What groups have been reached out to? What are their needs? Shouldn't that be shaping this space instead of, instead of just kind of a, it's, it's an ambiguous space. And the active space to the north that would be created by eliminating the ramp. For example, what are the parking impacts on the users? Has there been analysis of that done? And has there been discussion with the Secret Service right across the street? It's, it's a largely controlled area right now. Making it a very public active space might affect them and, and their security needs. And finally, we, we don't understand why the, the process hasn't allowed for discussion about a two-story rooftop addition to allow for more space, such as with the Archives and other needs. There was a project proposed along with this process that did include a two-story rooftop addition. We don't know where, why it shrunk down to one. We'd like to maybe bring that, that back to the table. But these are, the, the process is, is, has been confusing in the sense that we just don't, we don't have the answers to help us digest these concepts, like of impacts. And we really like to see that happen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. That ends the public comment period, and we'll return the discussion to the commission. The EDR is before you, and the recommendations are their comments. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In reviewing this comment, this project, I didn't realize how much of my staff had been working on it. I'm at all levels, and I just wanted to say, well, why not? I'm excited for the analysis you guys have been doing. Thank you for working with my staff. I think we're committed to work with the library and the mayor's office as well on identifying alternatives and ideas. As I've shared, we have a strong commitment now to urban design and looking at the urban design solution. So, we'll continue to work with them from the HP side, from the design side, and from the neighborhood planning side, support this project going forward, provide advice to the mayor, the, the library staff, and working with you. So, just wanted to make that, that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. May?
Just a couple of questions. So what's, what is the parking actually used for right now? I mean, how many spaces is it and what, how's it used?
So, it's approximately 100 spaces, and I think the majority of it is for employee parking. There are, there are a handful of spaces for the fleet vehicles, for the library, and then the police officer that's stationed at the library. So, it's, there's no public parking in the building right now.
Okay. So I assume that, that the library, if they make decisions that reduce parking, whatever they will be addressing, whatever their parking needs in some manner. Can, now, so I understand it because this is a, the, the NCPC has an approval authority over this project. You have NEPA responsibility, and that's why you're doing the EA.
Correct.
And so, I mean, it makes sense to me why that would be your, your role as the, or our role, I guess, is the, in, in leading the NEPA process and in convening 106 consultations because it's a federal action as well. But apparently, there is some confusion about that role here, and I assume that you can take actions to make sure that that's clear to people. But when it comes to the specific issue of, say, the conflict of interest, I mean, is it, is it actually correct that EHT is on the design team and on the NEPA team?
So, the environmental consultants are working through the, the architecture team.
Got it. Okay, so, all right.
We ask our applicants, as you know, to
Yeah, provide the-
talk to the analysis that we need for our NEPA, for Section 106 work.
Right, so they're doing multiple work. But when it comes to the actual production of the environmental assessment,
Yes, staff is-
they're taking direction from you.
Yes, staff is directing the work on the EA
Right.
and leading the 106.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, we do something similar in the Park Service when we are undertaking actions that are driven by somebody else's needs. And so, it's not uncommon for us to do something similar, but we, we do, we are conscious of the, of the potential when you have somebody working on the design team and working on the, on the EA at the same time. But that's, I mean, there are ways to-
Just to clarify, I mean, Trade Series is not working on the EA. That is standard. But, yeah.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I figured that was probably the case. I, I didn't think they were going into a new line of work.
Their, their presence at a NEPA meeting does not constitute a conflict of interest.
Mere presence, because not-
In any way.
No.
I mean, okay, I'm just-
Wouldn't want to suggest that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Would this be the appropriate time to move an amendment to the EDR?
Sure.
I actually have it.
Are you?
Okay. So essentially, the amendment that I'd like to move would be based on some of the testimony that we've heard regarding the DC Archives, and it would be urging the, just urging the mayor to study this issue to see if it, if it warrants further action or if it warrants the Archives partnering with the library. I think that it would, it has some bearing on the consideration by the commission because, as we saw, the loading dock or the, the parking ramps would be affected by this kind of decision if they do decide to go with the Archives. So, from our perspective at this point, there's been some back and forth. We've heard that the mayor is looking at it, the library is looking at it, then it seems like they're not. It seems like there hasn't been kind of any pen to paper to make a decision on this. So I think that just urging through the NCPC comments because it would inform the, the ramp issue, I think that it would be a useful thing to have in there and would address some of the concerns that we heard today.
Let me ask a question for Mr. Shaw. Is the mayor considering conducting such a feasibility study?
Yes, she is. And I think you've heard that, from the testimony here, that DGS has done the initial assessments around space needs and understanding that. So it's, it's something that the administration is working on right now. So, I'm happy for you to urge and appreciate if you acknowledged something's happening. But I'm, I think in our conversation, it's been more about the availability of that to the public and less about, about, about us undertaking something we're doing right now. It's like-
Yeah. I think we, I think we note that if there is an archive initiative, it could impact the public space and parking and such, so it is an issue the staff's aware of. This is principally a mayor council issue. It's a programmatic issue. And so, I'm, I'm wondering if you might be amenable to changing the first handful of words to say acknowledges that the mayor is considering undertaking a feasibility study regarding sharing and collecting. That doesn't put us directly in the middle of a mayor council issue.
Right. I, I think that, I would accept that amendment, but I think it's important also to urge that, that whatever does come out of it be made public as well. Sure. So acknowledging that there is something going on, but make sure that it's public at the back end.
Yep, I would. So I would propose that it strike what would be the first eight words and insert acknowledges that the mayor is considering undertaking a feasibility study regarding sharing or collecting, et cetera, and leave everything else as is. Acknowledges that the mayor is considering undertaking a feasibility study regarding sharing or collecting all parts, et cetera. Acknowledges that the mayor is considering undertaking a feasibility study regarding sharing or collecting all parts, et cetera. Any comments? It works. Okay, let's go.
I do, um.
Speaking to the amendment?
Well, speaking to the amendment because it makes sense as it manifests in physical design terms too. Um, uh, becau- I don't know which option it is, could, can, can we go, I forget which one it is.
Two and three.
Um, is it two? Anyway, um, I wanted to just comment overall on, on um the, the E D R, which I think you nailed it. I don't, I can't, once again, find anything I disagree with.
But before we address the E D R, the, the, the matter before us is the amendment, uh.
But, but they do, because there are these three options for the ramps. Um, if you were going to, I mean, it makes sense, I believe, for the commission to think about these things in concert with one another. Because if you don't need that, if, if, if you're not um supportive of the east ramp. Um, I mean, if you, let me turn that around, if you were supportive of the, if we were supporting the east ramp, then that would make it a moot point. Um, but I think there are lots of reasons not to support that, um, not least of which among them is um. The wall, as you've pointed out, ramp or no, I, 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 I couldn't agree more. And I'm so happy to hear a healthy balance um uh between contemporary urban design and historic preservation. Because um even Mies made mistakes and I agree that the wall is a mistake. Um, or at least it's a mistake as uh in, in two thousand sixteen. Um, additionally, so, so the four issues, um, I just would like to underscore, the, the exterior, um, that, that. The, the wall on G place, um, the pods, I completely agree um that they're, they're lumbering and. Obstruct- obstructionist and not entirely appealing from a design perspective in any regard. Um, the lighting, and um I, I think that this issue of the entrance vestibule is a really important one. Um, I, I get that the impulse to, to make it lighter and airier and all of that. But, but, but I do think that, that removing that entire wall, um, and I, this will all be settled in one oh six, I suppose. But since the, the um testimony from the Friends Library um brought it up as also a security issue. Um, gosh, I don't know that putting glass there instead is going to, to make um the security issues any um. Uh, better or worse, and, and what you lose in terms of the historic integrity of the building, um, it, it really does matter there. And, and it, I, I just don't see a good reason um to, to go there. I do, I do see a good reason to undo um the retaining wall on G place or whatever we're calling that thing, site wall. Um, but on the, but on, around the entrance vestibule and in the, um, in the loggia, I, it doesn't seem to make sense to me. Um, to, to um remove more historic fabric in the name of, of um security. That can be handled in a different way that may be additive. Um, and then the last part, um, I, I do think that, um, again, I, I, I think we should remember that it's concept. Um, I, I, I'm a broken record on that, but um, I think that the, the points about the auditorium. Might, might deserve a, a, deserve um some consideration uh on the fourth floor. That, it, depending on, if you had a full house and you only had, um. Well, I don't know how many bodies can fit into the current, uh, the design of the elevator, but that could be a real circulation problem. And I would urge the design team to keep looking at that. But otherwise, I think that the E D R nails it and, and the, the amendment is completely consistent with it.
Thank you very much. Further discussion, I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, let's, let's now second it.
And that's for the amendment?
That's for the amendment, that's the matter before us at the moment.
And then we'll have a further discussion on the E D R.
Yes, sir. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all that's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Amendment's adopted. Uh, now the E D R as amended just before us, and for, open for the discussion.
I had a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, it's appropriate, first of all, I, I just wanted to say, uh, although it came before uh my time. Um, looking at the options in terms of the addition to uh the library and additional uh, uh stories. I think it was um somewhat too bad that that wasn't actually further uh pursued. Um, I think there's a great opportunity in this city and every city uh for good urban design to have integral civic uses. Uh, that may actually include private uses and I think we're seeing that in the District of Columbia. Um, and a couple of projects that have recently been delivered. Um, and not to be contrarian, but a few pieces I will be a little bit contrarian on. Um, uh, but I want to highlight one of the, one of the uh aspects of, actually, I don't think we spent enough time in this presentation and even in the architecturals. And that's the removal of the wall on the southwest corner. So, that's actually on G Street, which created that strange little um, uh, hidden area. Um, and I think opening that up, where there's being proposed to have the kiosk or other sort of animation is an incredible move. And I think that uh is going to be really successful in terms of the street life, but also in terms of integrating exterior and interior activity within the library. I think the, the addition of glass in the stairwell also is part of that. It starts to really engage you from the street, I mean, when you set a facade so far back under an enclosure. Uh, you start to lose your connection from the sidewalk uh into the building. And I think adding uh glass into that structure does add some safety, does add some natural light, but I think more importantly, it adds, adds great engagement. And actually draws you in, uh, and makes it a, uh, I think a stronger presence um, uh, in the city and on that block. Um, in the same respects, I think the pods do that. Um, I think they're very exciting, I think the brightness of the color, um, I think that also starts to energize that room internally and also externally. And I think the function itself is speaking to what, didn't get into a lot of it here, but into the redefinition of what libraries are and how they're actually used. I mean, that whole idea is changing dramatically and here's an, an amazing opportunity to, to be a leader of that. Um, I think the renderings don't do them justice, I think they look much too high. If you're getting on top of those, it looks like there's, the structures are scraping the ceiling, but they're clearly not. Um, and I think that, as I say, the vibrancy of that color, and I think more importantly, when you look at a large, open space, as is historically designed in that. I think these pods or these kind of shapes are actually going to enhance that. Because you put smaller shapes within a larger shape and all of a sudden that larger shape has uh a stronger presence and a stronger definition. Now, there's no question it has to be done correctly and what correctly is, who knows? But uh, I, I am very supportive of doing those kind of elements within a larger box. Um, and then uh, one of my other uh quick comments, the, the G place, um, little park at, as that might be. If that is an option that's uh taken in option two and three. Um, I think the wall obviously has to come down, otherwise you have strange dead space again. Um, which is just going to fill with whatever, it's blown trash. Um, but I also think it needs to be looked at fairly strongly in that what kind of activities would actually occupy that? If you look at it, it's on the dark side of the building, it's on G place, which actually serves more of an alley, it's the backside of both buildings. Um, so, I think it would be fantastic if there's a great design with that entrance maybe into the larger room, um, that might help that. Uh, but I think that has to be seriously looked at, so there is valuable space and it is enjoyable space. And that's where I'll leave it.
Perfect, thank you very much. Additional? Ms. White?
I just wanted to echo a couple of the comments, particularly around the open space, and I compliment the staff for the work with the various parties to activate those spaces. And I think it's an incredible opportunity to get rid of that parking ramp. Um, it was very enlightening to hear how they use the parking currently and, you know, what that's anticipated for. So, it sounds like that would, would not be a big disruption to the functioning of the building if that ramp goes away. Um, I agree about the activation around the open space on G place that, I think it has great potential, but the wall is problematic. And, you know, if there's a way to relate to what's going on on the inside, maybe there's a place to have quiet contemplation outside and reading. But just walking around the building yesterday, you know, you think about how that's used, it's kind of a forbidding area. So, I think that's a challenge that needs to have continued thought. And, and I agree with Commissioner Wright, um, I really had to think differently about that auditorium level and the circulation challenges that that poses. And I'm very sensitive to the comments that were made today about access for people with disabilities in particular. Because elevators are um, um, overtaxed very quickly. So, I think an ongoing examination about the programming of the building and how that circulation is going to work is, is really important. But, and thank you for the, for the good work on this, because it's, you know, they're clearly, everyone is looking at every element to make sure that the space works. Because it's so important and it's, it's such an incredible building in that city.
Mr. May?
Um, Saul, trying to be very quick, I, you know, I, I, I tend to agree with the uh, the E D R um pretty much across the board and with uh. Commissioner Wright's comments on it, although I'm, and, and there are lots of things that I would like to say about the design of, of the, of the interiors. But frankly, it's beyond what we would normally undertake in this uh arena. I, I mean, this is something that's, that's been reviewed by H P R B, it's going through the section one oh six process, it's being reviewed by the Commission of Fine Arts. So, I mean, I think the major issues we really have addressed, which have to do with the, how this, this building faces on the street. I think there are issues with the lighting and the interior that we'll have to address as we move into the future. You know, where the uh, the uh auditorium is and, and even some of the interior treatments, I think, are, are of less consequence in terms of the, the general concern of the commission. So, I mean, I support the, the E D R as it is and look forward to the project uh moving forward. I am curious about the timing of things, do we know when it might come back to us again? Because this is just comments on concept, right?
Right, this is comments, comments, um, so, we're planning to release the E A in the winter. And then um aiming for preliminary in the spring and final summer.
Really, wow, that's fast.
It is aggressive.
Wow.
I mean, that, a lot of things would have to fall into place for that to happen, but that is.
Okay, well, good luck.
One of the.
Thank you.
The question before us is approving comments and is there a motion on the E D R as amended? Mr. Shaw, is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor of the E D R as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you very much. Last item on our agenda, item six A, is an information presentation on the submission guidelines and environmental procedures. It's an overview and we welcome Matt Fliss.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Um, beginning last year, staff has begun to focus on improving our review process. As one of our first steps, uh, we updated the E D R format to make it more concise and accessible. And you all have been using that format uh since then. As part of our broader initiative, staff is now moving uh to evaluate how to improve the N C P C sub, project submission guidelines. These form the foundation of the plan and project review process. We'd like to take the opportunity today to provide a brief over, overview of our existing guidelines, some of the issues and their challenges. And outline what we hope to accomplish through this review and update. I'll also briefly touch upon our update of the environmental procedures, although that won't be the focus of today's presentation. As I men- mentioned, the submission guidelines guide the plan and project review process and as such, they are a critical tool to the work of the commission. All agencies that are subject to plan and project review submit their proposals to the commission. And those submissions follow the requirements and proceed through the steps that are laid out in the guidelines. Currently, they cover a variety of project types including antennas, master plans, site and building plans. The guidelines tell the applicants the kind of information we want, but just as importantly, they feed into our staff analysis and recommendations. To support the commission's decision-making. The guidelines set up how and when we engage applicants on a range of planning topics and how projects are prepared for commission review. So, from our perspective, the guidelines are fundamentally important to achieving good planning outcomes. Briefly, the guidelines today have a few components, they describe the commission's authority as well as outline the contents of submissions. Including what kinds of documentation should be provided. They also lay out the different submission stages and describe the coordination and review process. That said, the existing guidelines have a series of challenges. First and most simply, the existing guidelines haven't been updated in some time. Therefore, this is the opportunity to evaluate their content, how they work and their user-friendliness. Also, the existing guidelines are not clear and well organized, and this can lead to confusion about whether, uh, what may or may not apply to the applicant's project. This in turn requires additional staff and applicant time and explanations and coordination. And sometimes the submission requirements range from too specific or too vague. At the same time, the requirements for different review stages are the same, and so the distinction between preliminary and final review is not always clear. Another major challenge is that the review stages do not necessarily align with the stages of environmental analysis or historic preservation review. We'll be evaluating that coordination as well as the relationship of other laws and regulations to help streamline the process. And make the review stages more intuitive for the applicant as well as the commission. So, what are we expecting to achieve through this review and update? First, of course, we'd like to guy, we'd like to have guidelines that are clear and easy to use. This will help improve the applicant experience and also help streamline the staff review. Some of this can be achieved by simply reorganizing the document, adding graphics and simplifying the language. Secondly, we'd like to better define the stages of re- review and clearly distinguish what project information is necessary at each stage. Differentiating the approvals will help clarify the purpose of each review for the applicant as well as identifying commission priorities. We'll also be evaluating the timing of reviews, in many cases, the preliminary review is coming relatively late in the project's development. And this can create challenges for both the applicants, our review and the commission. This update will evaluate how those reviews coordinate with the commission's own guidance as well as other agencies' own project stages. Related to this, staff is in the process of updating the N C P and environmental and historic preservation policies and procedures. These establish, these establish the rules for compliance with NEPA and section one oh six. As part of this effort, we'll be evaluating the re, those stages and how, uh, and what kinds of document, documentation would be required. Our goal is to better relate these in a way that makes sense for the applicants as well as for commission decision-making. Um, in addition, we'll also be looking at other rules and regulations such as flood risk and stormwater management to understand how they can be better coordinated with the guidelines. Uh, staff will be providing a separate briefings to the commission on some of these topics in the future. Again, and most importantly, we hope that the updated guidelines will help improve submissions, enhance our analysis. That in turn supports the commission decision-making and ultimately results in better uh planning outcomes. So, in terms of next steps, N C P C staff is now beginning outreach to various applicant agencies where we will seek their input on the existing submission guidelines. And also opportunities for improvement as well as to better understand their own design and review process. Subsequently, a series of recommendations for updating the guidelines will be prepared and potential revision, revisions as necessary would be developed. Again, we're early in the process and we expect to return to the commission um later this year to discuss our findings and recommendations. Ultimately, the commission will be responsible for adopting any new guidelines. Uh, that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Fliss? Uh, Mr. May, then Mr. Shaw?
So, uh, I don't know that I actually have questions so much as I have a couple of comments about this. First of all, um, the idea of coordinating the, their, our approval process with the natural stage. with the natural stages of NEPA analysis and section 106 and so on is hugely important to, to the Park Service and I think this will be highly, highly beneficial because we are, our approval processes are slightly out of sync with yours and so we wind up having to force some work early that we wouldn't ordinarily do. So, it's, I think that's, that's a welcome discussion. The, also, understanding the stages of approval better because it's, you know, we're, we're often working with outside groups who are bringing, say, memorial projects to us and it's very difficult to explain the stages of an NCPC approval where, you know, we go in for comments on concept, but that's not actually an approval stage. But we do go to the Commission of Fine Arts for an approval at concept and then we come back for preliminary, but that's more like a revised concept at CFA and, and, you know, it just goes on and on. Which brings me to my other point, which is actually, I, I, I don't know that you mentioned this specifically or have it in mind, but some coordination or understanding of how this interrelates with CFA approvals, I think is also a really big, uh, big component of it. And then finally, the relationship of master planning to subsequent project approvals and, you know, when is a master plan appropriate or necessary to be able to move on? Because I think that's, that's an area that's been really gray for us and we had to sort of chart some new territory, for example, in the National Mall Plan when our, you know, you thought it was a master plan and we thought it was a general management plan and, you know, never the twain shall meet, I guess. But they did meet and it worked out, but I think it required a little bit of flexibility on the rules. So, I, I welcome this greatly and look forward to speaking with you at greater length.
Mr. Shaw?
Just echo that as well. So, we're looking at HPRB and our other, our other groups that we support in terms of looking at timing, transparency, language, understanding district versus federal. So, I think we're also very excited to work with you to make sure we can either not align timelines and align language to really make sure that people are understanding federal and district interests in some of the work that we're doing, especially as we launch on our comprehensive planning process. So, just want to thank you very much and great minds think alike.
Can I mention one other thing? Please.
I just, I, you know, the other thing I want to compliment you on is that, that the staff at NCPC is that the, the changes that have been made in the reporting with the EDRs that we get, it's hugely welcome. Getting the PowerPoint, having more succinct information, hugely helpful and I, I see this as, you know, a follow-on to, to making your, your procedures more user-friendly and more Commissioner-friendly.
I think on that note, sensing nothing else for the good of the whole, I think we stand adjourned. We're adjourned.